That's not typical. That's typical. I mean, I realize the downtown is not that typical.
That is typical. History will have its own. First, basically, you know, right now, we're actually doing construction while the streets came in. As before, area of space developed, we're doing the streets here. So, like, Westminster Boulevard is, for example, it'll have a consistent level from May to May to second.
So, they constructed, developed, for the city maintenance. Is there any way to have any campus special? But then maintain that, uh, you could be coming from the businesses to their best interest. There'd be a lot of visitors here. Taking all the lights of, uh, the Chicago City and, like, the supply of all those businesses to do even really gorgeous and the decorations going, it'd be a small kingdom. So, that would be considered for this downtown area. Was that too far down the road for this?
Yeah, I think that, yes, the general permanent district that's established to cover the downtown does have a lottery that will assess across the entire site, which is the time of eighteen. It's like the sidewalks, like, the suburbs.
Last time, it was ten. The purpose of this one is we have plans for less than, like, the foundation of contract people go through the city. While corporations are given us, who may or may not have the same guy that's building the standards, so they're doing the knockups. So, this is not a cost of the city's contract. We're using the artist, Jason, my correct? We're using safe artists, one of our ways to, uh, follow the fall. Joan Maynard, the artist, and the artist was selected by, uh, by a partnership. Where staff is pleased with that, Joan Maynard, her, uh, she's a Bill Keane, who is putting the original artists for the art, who's really good, Bill Keane also delivering one of his services. We had, uh, yeah, the first commitment group was referred to, which would give us five out of six. And that was three months ago. All right, guys, we have, uh, three minutes.
We don't see that Wayne Green show. So, you can call him, but he may or may not look. Apologies.
All right, good evening, everyone. This is the December ninth, two thousand nineteen Westminster City Council meeting. I ask you, please, at this time, to join us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Ms. Fitch, would you do the roll call, please?
Mayor Atchison.
Here.
Councillor Demont.
Here.
Mayor Protem Sights.
Here.
Councillor Seymour.
Here.
Councillor Scully. Councillor Smith.
Here.
And Councillor Vols.
Here.
Councillor, the first item up on consideration tonight is a acceptance of the minutes of the November twenty-fifth meeting, Mr. Demont.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move that the City Council approve the minutes of the November twenty-fifth, twenty nineteen, and December second, twenty nineteen meetings as presented.
Mr. Vols.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor, signify by aye.
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 Any opposed? And now minutes carried. I will also, at this time, entertain a motion for an excused absence for Councillor Scully as she is out on personal business. Mr. Demont?
So moved.
Ms. Sights?
Second.
I have a motion in second, all in favor, aye.
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 Any opposed? Ms. Scully is excused. All right, before we start, let me explain how we're gonna modify the agenda slightly tonight. We have several presentations of open space volunteers, employees, service awards. After that, our normal piece is to go to public comments, which we will do. However, I'm going to limit public comments to one hour. We have a large number of pieces that we have to get through from public business tonight. Once the business stuff is taken care of, I will come back to public comments, and we will continue until we get through them. I already have enough people signed up on the first sheet to take up the full hour. If you are still planning to ask to speak, make sure you have signed up, because I'm gonna go strictly by the sheet as we go through in the process. But again, once we get done with the presentations, it's one hour of public comment, and then we will come back to doing the city business. Once that's done, we'll come back to comments again. All right, first item up is a presentation, Mr. Vols, if you would, please.
Would our open space volunteers please come forward?
Yeah, we just line up right here. We got a good track. Yeah, we did. Well, thank you all for coming tonight, and it's hard for us to recognize all of your hard work. I'm a little bit biased, but I think we have a very fast volunteer team, any city, anywhere. As you know, our open space always ranks as one of the top amenities of our city. Parks, trails, and open spaces are what people will list as their favorite reasons for living in Westminster. Thank you for all you do. And what we'll do now, we'll turn that in, let's each introduce ourselves, and then also where you work, what open space you primarily work in over.
Martha Hines, and I'm a volunteer company with the city of Westminster. For your service, and you're such a great part of this city fabric, and you're very much a part of the culture.
My name is Evelyn, and I've worked wherever, um, worked.
That's gonna be most of their answers. They help us out wherever. Where's your favorite spot in open space?
I don't know. I can tell you my favorite task, though, is building those Gabion baskets, you know, the Leonardo da Vinci invention, and we throw rocks into these lovely baskets to pour up, um, waterways to make sure they don't go around.
I'm John Carpenter. I enjoy joining the Mackay Lake Project, probably the last. I like Russian olive removals.
Um, my name is Marilyn Carpenter. I guess you could say my favorite might be, I like it all, but whenever I pick and get trash, I keep, touch your toes. Eyes at the same time. I like all of you.
Lloyd Williams. If I can do a fashion show.
Now, who are thinking?
For those volunteers who like to get a break.
Yeah, it says R O T team, which is Russian olive terminator. And it comes with a long sleeve, because Russian olives have thorns. And if you look closely at the shirt, it probably has some paint stains from the same color as the benches out at Stanley Lake.
My name is Scott Smith, and I think probably, I mean, wherever you have us go is always, next thing is the funnest part. But, yeah, the Russian olives, and actually, the color of this was chosen because it's kinda like blood color. Because if you don't know Russian olives, they got the big, long thorns, and you always come out scratched up when you get through work.
So, I'm Laura Breser Smith, and I guess I would have to say that, you know, we cut down trees, we plant trees, so it's kind of the whole circle of life, the open space volunteer.
Hi, Bobby Weber. My favorite part is the city staff and volunteers, and we do a lot of really nasty work, but the best part is going down, we are heavy users of Big Dry Creek, and going down and going, yep, I planted that tree, yep, we put those baskets up, yep, we did that, oh, it looks awesome.
My name's Greg Weber, and since no one has said it yet, I'll say the greenhouse project in April every year, where we transplant a lot of things that end up in all of the common, you know, common area gardens around the city. So, when you look at those, part of us, part of our love is in there, so.
And then we rip them out in the fall.
I'm Deanna Lehman, and I enjoy all the projects that we do, even though I have the firm belief that the Parks and Open Space staff sits down and looks at what needs to be done, and they say, I'm not gonna do that, I'm not gonna do that. Let's get the volunteers to do it. I don't like it. We're onto you.
I'm Hugh Sexnider. I enjoy planting trees and building trails. Good time.
My name is Bob Samuel. I especially like to do building things. Thing I just like to do, Russian olive.
That's a bonding expression.
Thank you all for being here with your.
Well, as you can see, this is a fun-loving group, and they really put their action where their heart is. Saturday mornings, they're up early with me doing work that they could be doing on their own properties, and they're doing it for the public, for our open space, for the love of the team. Always have a smile on their face. Sometimes, for me, it's hard to get up on Saturday morning for these jobs. I show up, and immediately, I'm having the time of my life. So, I can't thank you enough. Everyone who is up here has been working for us for at least ten years, and we've got, most of you have been here for twenty years. So, that's far longer than I have been working for the city, and we just can't thank you enough. So much of the open space is beautiful because of.
So, now, I will read a proclamation in your honor. Whereas open space volunteer program provides over six thousand hours of dedication work on open spaces and parks, and whereas Evelyn, Edwell, David Cox, Deanna Lehman, Hugh Schneider, and Lisa Schumaker have served as open space volunteers for ten years, whereas Laura Bresler Smith, John Carpenter, Marilyn Carpenter, Bob Satan, Scott Smith, Ray Weber, Abby Weber, and Lloyd Williams have served as open space volunteers for twenty years, and whereas their hard work has led to healthier and cleaner public lives in the city of Westminster, and whereas the council supports and thanks these volunteers for their continued efforts to support these open spaces, and we're now, therefore, I, her, bachelors, mayor of the city of Westminster, on behalf of the entire city council and staff due now hereby, thank and recognize these volunteers for the years of service to the city of Westminster, and call upon the people of Westminster to celebrate their hard work and dedication.
All right, Mr. Seymour, would you start our employee service awards, please?
We could have Scott Carlson and his family come up. Sorry, Brian Carlson. Heated. This is one of our awards for twenty years of service, so I better get this right now, because my golf game needs a lot of help, so. Brian Carlson is the city's head golf professional at Walnut Creek Golf Preserve and a native residence of Westminster. Over the past twenty years, Walnut Creek Golf Preserve has provided championship public golf experience for our region with over six hundred and forty-two thousand rounds of golf played on its links, and hosted some of Colorado's most prestigious golf championships, including United States Golf Association Championship qualifiers, twenty of those, seven golf, Colorado Golf Association Championships, three A G, A J G A Colorado Hale Erwin Championships, and three Colorado Senior Open Championships. Brian is honored to work with a great team each day, and is most proud of their commitment to building relationships and delivering exceptional experience to our community. One of the highlight accomplishments for Brian and his team was the successful rebranding of the golf course from the Heritage Golf Course at Westmore to Walnut Creek Golf Preserve in twenty seventeen. With this rebrand, golf operations is focused on delivering golf experience the way nature is intended, educating guests on environmental stewardship, sustainability practices, and the two hundred and fifteen beautiful acres of golf course and open space. Brian is honored with the Public Golf Merchandiser of the Year Award by the Colorado Section of Professional Golf Association of America, P G A, in twenty eighteen. Brian is married to his wife, Steph, and they have two daughters, Amanda and Maddie. Couldn't make it tonight. Congratulations. Thank you very much. Anything you'd like to say? Thank you. I could have Barbara Godridis and her family. Just you. How'd I do on the last name?
Very good. I'm impressed.
Barbara began her career with the city of Westminster in September of nineteen ninety-nine, and has held the following positions: Facility Assistant, City Park Recreation Complex; Recreation Supervisor Assistant, City Park Recreation Complex; Recreation Supervisor, Swim and Fitness Center; Recreation Superintendent, Recreation Programs. Barbara's married, has two grown children, Genevieve and Ryan. Fun fact is both of Barbara's children met their spouses working for the city of Westminster's lifeguards at City Park Pool. Barbara has four grandchildren that enrich her life daily. Barbara comes from a large family and plans a large family reunion of over seventy people every two years. She likes hiking, photography, cooking, getting her toes in the sand on any beach, time with her family, and traveling with John, her husband of thirty-two years. Congratulations on twenty with us. Another twenty-eight years recipient that could not be with us is Bruce Moa. He was hired in nineteen ninety-nine as a police officer. He currently works as a late swing shift patrol during Tuesday through Friday. Bruce has a twenty-year-old daughter and a fifteen-year-old son, and his wife of twenty-two years. He enjoys outdoors and takes every opportunity to spend time with his family and friends as time permits. He especially enjoys camping and hunting in Colorado, so if you see Bruce around, congratulate him on twenty years. Robert Pacheco, if you could come up, and if your family's with you. Would you introduce the troops here?
These are my grandkids. This is Bubba, Eric, and Jeremiah.
Hi, guys. Are you ready for this, too? All right. Robert's twenty years. He works as a street inspector, handling contracts dealing with concrete, asphalt, pavement, and markings, bridge repairs, sweeping, and storm open drainage. Robert has received the department's Customer Service Champion, has been on committees for issues, or Issues Task Force in safety, as well as an instructor for CPR training, forklift driver training, and has his commercial driver's license. Robert enjoys hunting, fishing, camping, and is a grandpa to ten grandchildren, with twins coming in February. Robert is married to Angela for twenty-three years. You've got your hands full.
I do.
Congratulations, and thank you.
Wayne Reed, did you ever come in? I didn't see you come in. Well, Wayne was scheduled to be one of our twenty-five-year recipients, and the event that Wayne didn't show up, the city gets to keep the check, so we'll put that back in the general fund. But just to notice that Wayne Reed started at the Police Department in nineteen ninety-four when he came from the Glendale Police Department as an experienced officer. Wayne has held the positions of Field Training Instructor, Master Patrol Officer, Defensive Taxes Instructor, Rapid Deployment Active Shooter Instructor, Riot Control, Mobile Field Force Instructor, and recently retired from the SWAT team after twenty-one years of service. Wayne is currently assigned to the Professional Standards Unit, playing an important role as an internal affairs background investigator. Wayne has received numerous commendations through his years of service, including the Elks Officer of the Year, Westminster Optimist Club Officer of the Year, four Meritorious Service Medals, plus the Medal of Valor. Wayne is a, and this is the part that got to me, I'm trying to figure out what he was doing. Wayne is a competitive submission grappler and award winner. He has been the Master Division State Champion and the NAGA, North American Grappling Association, Regional and Absolute Champion. Currently, Wayne is training coaching, submission grappling, and Brazilian Jiu-Jitsu. He enjoys camping and riding ATVs with the family. If I gotta go into a dark alley, I'm going with Wayne. So, congratulations to Wayne for twenty-five years of service, and with all of our twenty-five-year recipients, there's also a stipend comes with a hundred dollars for every year of service. So, with congratulations to Wayne and his family for their service. Mr. Demont, would you please?
I was doing some math while I was sitting back there with the calculator, because I'm not good with numbers. So, two hundred and seventy-five years of service between all the people who are recognized between the different levels of service, whether they showed up or not, I think that's pretty impressive and a good show of how great of a city this is for people to work for and how much they care about it. So, I just thought that was neat math that I wanted to share with you guys. So, Jerry, if you would, introduce your guest for us. Welcome. Is there anything you'd like to say before I read through your bio here?
No, just that I'm truly blessed. I can't believe how fast thirty years went by. Worked for a great organization for the city of Westminster and great people. Thank you.
Glad to have you.
So, Jerry started her career with the city in nineteen eighty-nine in the recreation, in recreation as a part-time recreation clerk. In nineteen ninety-one, she was hired with the Police Department as a full-time dispatch, later promoted to a report specialist, and then liquor investigation officer, and she is now a senior analyst. Jerry's current position with the Police Department includes administrative and strategic analysis, performance measures, goals, objectives, and legislation and grant administration. She is a member of both the Colorado Crime Analyst Association and International Association Crime Analysis, which allows the city to share crime data and receive free and low-cost training along with the ability to attend conferences. Jerry has received numerous team and action awards over the years. She continues to serve as a voting member of the Urban Area Working Group, and as the Chair for the North Central Region and Urban Area Securities Initiatives Incident Operations Committee. That's a mouthful right there. As the Police Department's Grant Coordinator, she has applied, managed, and administered a majority of the grants awarded that have provided equipment, training, overtime reimbursement, and personnel to the department. Jerry has been happily married to her husband, Jim, for thirty-one years, and has three beautiful children, Tyler, and the twins, Chris and Allison. In twenty seventeen, Jerry and Jim sold their family home so that they could have a larger home in order to assist in caring for her aging and ill parents and sister. She currently serves as the treasurer for the one... Good that you read it, so I don't butcher it. Which was founded by her father, John H. V. Hill, in two thousand and five, and provided student scholarships. Jerry enjoys spending quality time with her family, friends, bike riding, taking weekend spin classes, and escaping to her family cabin, and reading and writing and traveling. Very cool. Well, very much thank you for your services in the city. Here's your plaque.
Ms. Smith, would you do our forty-year awards, please? Now, I know the Sailor family is here.
Well, this is pretty impressive for forty years of service with Westminster. I've been with my employer for nine years. I can't imagine adding thirty-one more years to that, so congratulations on your achievement. Is there anything that you'd like to say before I read your bio?
I just put it in perspective, Chief Carlson over here, when he first started as a rookie police officer, I was already a sergeant. He climbed the ladder, and I stayed the same.
Well, thank you. Kevin Sailor is a retired police sergeant, currently assigned to the municipal court as a part-time security officer, a newly created position when he retired. Retired from his full-time position in January twenty eighteen. Kevin has a son, Chris, who is a detective with the Westminster Police Department. His other son, Matt, is a former Westminster police officer, who is now an agent with the Colorado Bureau of Investigation. His daughter-in-law, Betsy, Matt's wife, is a sergeant with, excuse me, is a sergeant with the Wheat Ridge Police Department. He is a, he is proud of his family and their contributions to law enforcement and community safety. Kevin is married to Julie, and they've been married for three years. She has been very supportive of him and his roles as a police officer, and now Court Security Officer. They are raising a bloodhound and a Labrador Retriever together. Kevin has two grandsons and enjoys.
Ms. Saitz, would you do our forty-five-year?
I have the honor of having Deputy Chief Bill Work and his family. This is an absolute -- oh, good, there's more. Would you mind introducing your family?
Absolutely. This is my wife, Trudy. My son, Kevin, who probably doesn't need an introduction.
I might have seen him once or twice before.
His wife, Kristen. Chelsea. Elia. Grandson, Bo.
Well, congratulations. You're blessed with a beautiful family. This is a pleasure and an honor tonight. Forty-five years is quite a bit of service and dedication to the wonderful city of Westminster, but having known you personally, you're also a tremendous human being, so I'm very pleased and feel fortunate I'm the one who gets to make this proclamation, or recognition, rather. Bill Work, Deputy Fire Chief, began his career with the Westminster Fire Department on November eleventh, nineteen seventy-four. Bill began at the start of the paid fire department as one of the first of two full-time firefighters hired by the city of Westminster. He has held the ranks of firefighter, shift officer, lieutenant captain, training chief, battalion chief, fire marshal, deputy chief of technical services, served as the operations chief for several years, and currently serves as the deputy chief of administration. Bill has three college degrees, an associate's degree in fire science from Red Rocks Community College, a bachelor's degree in criminology and law enforcement from Metropolitan State University, and a master's of science degree in management from Regis University. Bill holds the designation of executive fire officer from the National Fire Academy and is a graduate of the Rocky Mountain Leadership Program through the University of Colorado at Denver. During Bill's forty-five years of service, the last twenty-five of which he has been in a second-in-command position, Bill has had a direct contribution to changes in procedures, new equipment and apparatus purchases, new policies have been created, and new services have been offered. Bill has had a hand in practically every hiring process for new firefighters and in every officer promotional process since the days the career fire department began. Bill feels very fortunate to have had the opportunity to be on the leading edge of so many advancements and changes the fire department has made over the last forty-five years. Bill was awarded the Westminster Fire Department Purple Heart, or as his Marine Corps son would say, the Forgot to Duck Award, for a serious compound leg fracture he sustained at a structure fire in nineteen seventy-six. Bill has served in many specialized roles. Bill was member of the dive team and was part of the transition moving the dive team from the volunteer fire department to the career fire department. Bill was one of the inaugural members of the Adams County Hazardous Materials Response Team and served as its director for two years before it merged with Jefferson County. Bill was a longtime member of the Metropolitan Arson Investigators Association and was one of eight fire investigators designated as a commissioned police officer as he supervised as the marshal until a full-time fire investigator was hired. Bill collaborated with three other north area fire departments back in the nineteen eighties to create the first joint training academy, the precursor to the current north area training academy. Bill was an inaugural member of the city's first economic development task force long before economic development became its own department. Bill is considered a subject matter expert in the area of firefighter fitness testing and wellness, and has helped other fire departments develop their fitness performance testing. Bill has helped raise money for numerous charities and organizations. At the age of fifty, he helped raise money for a children's hospital when he was selected to be Mr. July in the Colorado Firefighters Calendar. Bill also serves as the director of the Westminster Firefighters Burn Fund, a charity that primarily provides money to victims of fire to help meet some of their immediate needs after losing everything. Bill led many fire department sports teams to various championships in softball and volleyball, and achieved various gold, silver, and bronze medals in the Colorado State and World Fire Police Games. Bill has received over forty Team in Action recognitions. As the deputy chief of administration, a significant amount of Bill's time is utilized to manage the fire department's sixteen-million-dollar operating budget and a number of capital improvement projects. Bill also has administrative oversight of the Emergency Management Fire Prevention Bureau and Technical Services Sections. Bill is most proud of his contributions to the health and fitness programming for the department. He instituted mandatory fitness training and testing in nineteen eighty-two. He worked with the University of Colorado professor to develop and validate a job-specific performance assessment to evaluate the physical fitness capabilities for both new hire candidates and incumbent firefighters. In addition to enhancing the annual occupational medical physical program, he has brought additional screenings that have included carotid artery scans, heart scans, and participation in the heart disease prevention program at both CU and CSU, enabling firefighters to better monitor their overall health and wellness. Bill feels very fortunate to have been on the ground floor of Westminster's development of the career fire department and to have been involved in so many important leadership roles that have guided the Westminster Fire Department from an all-volunteer fire department to the highly respected and now nationally accredited and ISO one-rated all-career fire department it is today. Bill states, "You don't stay in one organization this long unless you have the greatest job in the world, have been surrounded by a lot of great people and coworkers, and have had the support of a great city and its leaders." Bill has worked for four city managers, five fire chiefs, six mayors, and forty-three, now forty-five, city councilors. He just hopes he has made a difference. Bill is married to his wife, Trudy. Bill has five sons, four grandsons, and a new granddaughter along with two stepsons, a stepdaughter, and another granddaughter. Bill and Trudy enjoy international travel and many outdoor activities. I did not know this. Bill is retiring on January twelfth, twenty twenty. Thank you so much for the many years of service and what you brought us. It's my honor to present this to you, and I'd like you to, if you feel so inclined, please feel free to say a few words.
I think you said plenty. I don't want to keep you any longer. I know there's a lot of business going on, but I do feel blessed that I found a career along with my other fellow public safety officers that makes a difference in people's lives every day, and to have worked for an organization that's been so supportive. So, thank you, and for the recognition.
We thank you for sharing. Thank you.
All right, the next item on the agenda is the public comment period. This is a period of time that we allow people to come to the podium for a period of up to five minutes to talk about any item that they wish. However, we do have public hearings scheduled on two items, that if you're here for one of those two items that are on schedule, item number ten, please hold your public comments until we call for those items. If you have not been here for a public meeting before, this is a one-way conversation from you to us. This is not a back and forth during this five-minute period. Any questions you raise will be captured on the tape that's going on, or when you come up and you start, your green light will come on. When you have one minute left, it will turn yellow, and when your time is up, it will turn red. And I will call you up in the way you have signed up, and at this point, at seven-thirty-five, we will hold public comments until the hour of eight-thirty-five. Don Fittis.
Testing. Good. Mayor, councilors, Mr. Tripp and staff, thank you for this opportunity to speak to you this evening. I hope you all enjoyed your Thanksgiving and are looking forward to the upcoming holidays. A month ago, we had a general election, and I would like to thank former councilors Haney and Manke for their service to the city of Westminster. We should all be very grateful that they call Westminster home, and I would also like to thank them for their contributions they make professionally to our community every day. I'd also like to thank all the candidates who ran for city council. Seeking public office in itself, I believe, has value. It takes courage to run, and without their participation, we would be a less dynamic community. To those of you who ran for council and were successful, congratulations. I wish you all the best. Your success is our success. I'd also like to remind you that you have all been elected at large and have an obligation to represent all the citizens of Westminster. That being said, I sincerely believe a message was sent this last election cycle. That message is that change is inevitable, but growth is optional. Yes, Westminster has a comprehensive plan to address growth in a strategic way. It was created in twenty thirteen, revised in twenty fifteen, and is currently being updated with Westminster Forward. In that plan, there are five focus areas and nine opportunity areas. You know these better than I do. Five focus areas include downtown, Westminster Station, I-25 North or the Orchard, Church Ranch either side of thirty-six, and Brook Hill or the old Builder's Square area. Good things have happened within these five focused areas. However, challenges remain. There's vacant retail, most recently the Safeway on Federal, burned-out structures on Federal, a vacant hospital just across the way, vacant restaurants, and unfulfilled opportunities in all of them. In the meantime, in the nine opportunity areas, development is happening at, I believe, a faster rate than the focus areas. In most every case, these opportunity areas have been upzoned from previous plans. According to Westminster Forward, the revised standards include a policy that land use, any land use change, may not negatively impact the transportation system, drainage, water and sewer infrastructure, water supply, and I'll repeat that, water supply, fire and police services, parks and open space systems, or the city's general fund revenue. With that statement, I am politely asking you to focus on the focus areas, and the rest put on hold. Take your foot off the gas, take a breath, and reevaluate what we're doing and preserve Westminster. Thank you for your time.
Mr. Work.
Hello again. It's not as fun being on this side. Hopefully, one day, I'll have you guys all out on my boat, as much as we've been seeing each other. I'd like to start off by just thanking the council and mayor and everybody for continuing to give the public a say. I want to start by just with a quote from the May fourteenth task force meeting, the one-hour-five mark. There was a quote from Max Kirschbaum that says, "For water quality, no physical solution will be good enough for me." So that was kind of how we were going into these meetings with, we kind of thought there was hope, and it kind of feels like now there's no hope, and it kind of feels like from the beginning, it was never really even open-minded to even finding a solution. I mean, the info you're getting is only as the info of your source that you're getting it from. It's becoming clear, as a member of the tagging committee, that what we thought were making leaps and bounds and making a system that was hugely more successful than the previous systems, it appears that the reports going up the chain to the city were just of the failures and the dead ends that we were finding. But we were making leaps and bounds, but it seems like it was being cherry-picked, the information that you guys were given. It seemed to be kind of a common theme, after looking on the websites and the reports and the videos the city has put out, that cherry-picking your points versus looking at the totality of the data. It feels like that's kind of what you're using to, you know, maybe the scare tags to get the uninformed public on the city's side, and once they become educated or we get a chance to talk to people, they, you know, don't feel the same. Another quote was just the record number of boats being found with ZQM in Colorado. Again, just another cherry-picked data, that if you were to look at just the clickbait headline there, there's a record number of boats using lakes in Colorado as well, and boaters are complying. They're going to one of these seventy-two decontamination stations on their own before they even go to a lake to get deconed, because they know they've been to a lake that might have been infested. So a lot of that has been happening. Boaters are complying. They don't want to lose water quality. Everybody knows that is very valuable, even on lakes that aren't drinking water. You know, the system has been a hundred percent effective so far, as far as the state system goes. No adult zebra mussel's ever been found, no lake has been infested, and all lakes that have the larva, and there's one that currently does, all lakes that have previously found it have been off the list in five years. They have to stay on the list for five years, because that's the average lifespan of a zebra or quack of mussel. So again, the state system has been very successful. Just to kind of go in what we ended with the task force before we got the news that you guys were no longer looking into finding solutions, a quick rundown was just the layers of security. You start off with the water inspection, decontamination, and then after that, you go through a thirty-five-day quarantine. Once that is taken in place, all the permit holders know all the following going into the ban. There's no more multi-purpose, multi-home household permit holders, I should say. So single household permits only, which a few of the ones that were caught circumventing were blaming it on the other households, so they could kind of find a loophole of not getting punished. Increased fine for breaking the system, a lifetime ban if found tampering with the system, publicly noted that if you are banned, you will be publicly known. The state system, which is the Colorado system, which is eleven or fourteen other states, which would have caught one hundred percent of the people that circumvented the system last year. A through-hole tagging system, which was another loophole that we found that we were working on through the tagging committee. New stainless steel swaging system with laser etched serial numbers to prevent counterfeit. Secure XP tags, which all the ones that we have seen, that they have said have been hacked, were, sure, they were hacked, but they were detectable, which is what we're striving for. A tamper evidence system, not a tamper proof system. And RFID tags that were yet to be vetted out because of the news that came out. And we had a few other systems that were still yet to be presented that we didn't even get a chance to present before we got the news. So I guess, just in closing, really quickly, all I'm asking is that you keep the door open, you put the right process together to find a solution-oriented process to get us back on the lake. There are solutions that will minimize the threat, and just don't look at it as five-hundred boaters, but five-hundred families and friends and thousands of people that enjoy this lake that improve the quality of life for City Westminster. Thank you.
Lee Merritt.
would have caught 100% of the people that circumvented the system last year. A through-hole tagging system, which was another loophole that we found that we were working on through the tagging committee. New stainless steel swaging system with laser etched serial numbers to prevent counterfeit. Secure XP tags, which all the ones that we have seen, that they have said have been hacked, were, sure, they were hacked, but they were detectable, which is what we're striving for. A tamper evidence system, not a tamper proof system. And RFID tags that were yet to be vetted out because of the news that came out. And we had a few other systems that were still yet to be presented, that we didn't even get a chance to present before we got the news. So I guess, just in closing, really quickly, all I'm asking is that you keep the door open, you put the right process together to find a solution-oriented process to get us back on the lake. There are solutions that will minimize the threat, and just don't look at it as 500 boaters, but 500 families and friends and thousands of people that enjoy this lake, that improve the quality of life for City Westminster. Thank you.
Lee Merritt.
Good evening. I'm also here to talk about Stanley Lake. So I also served on the boating tag committee for the last nine months, and here to remind everyone that Westminster used to not own the land Stanley Lake is on. Jefferson County did. They did it to you with the requirement that you maintain and manage the recreation. They also gave you $2 million to build facilities out there. Point blank, boating existed before, boating doesn't now. This city failed to maintain the recreation that was there. That happened on the staff's watch, that put a system in place for 12 years and never once did a single thing to make it better and stay in front of this issue. The boaters have been taking the entire hit for it. For nine months, I've been doing what the city staff should have been doing. They are getting taxpayer money to pay their salaries, and they're not doing their job. So we came in and we're doing it. As Kevin said, we made leaps and bounds. There are multiple solutions out there that were in the process of being vetted out. Two weeks before the news came out that Don Tripp and Jason Genk aren't pursuing this anymore, we had marching orders to go get just slightly different products so they could vet it, because we sat there and in one minute went through all the hacked ones and were 100% correct on it. We're not trained individuals on it, and we figured it all out. So what's clearly going on is you can't take a city staff that let a 12-year solution sit idle and do nothing, and then put them back in charge of a new solution. They are not capable of it. I sat there for nine months with staff. I can tell you right now, they do not have the capacity to do it. Point blank. You need to get a third party, or you need to clean house. If this was a prison and 24 inmates escaped prison in one year, would the warden stay? No, he wouldn't keep his job. You guys let everyone keep their job, you give Don a raise and extended his contract for a year. When are the taxpayers going to actually get their money's worth out of this? Every Jefferson County citizen should be looking at you guys wanting their $2 million back and their land, because you guys have failed to uphold your end of the bargain. Point blank. Get someone who knows what they're doing to sit there and figure this out, because we're tired of doing your work for free.
I think Kevin and Lee said everything really, really well, but I work every day, day in and day out, for a corporation. There's a huge buzzword in our corporation, and it's accountability. The task force, the sub-tagging committee, people outside of that have spent countless hours away from their families trying to work on a situation, something that would solve the problem. I think most of the boaters here would agree that water quality is very important, and I think that we're all on the same page as far as we need to protect the water source. I think that most of the boaters that would come and be on Stanley Lake and abide by these rules are willing to follow them. I think we have good boaters and good citizens, and so I want to know when the accountability is going to come in for everybody that let people put in their time and their energy and their effort and their money into coming up with a solution, but we got a notice a couple of weeks ago that it's just dead for 2020. That was really disappointing. So I want to know who's going to be held accountable. I'm asking you today for answers beyond water quality. The sub-tagging committee came three weeks ago up with a solution. We were waiting on a software update that was to come out in January. We got the news of the lake before that software update came out, so it didn't feel like we even had a chance. It felt like it was shut down from the beginning, and the task force was implemented as a way to quiet citizens. So I am interested in having accountability. I want more answers other than water quality. That's a poor excuse at this point. There are good options that have been put forth. I'm asking for something publicly. I want information on why the decision was made. I know who made it. I don't want the excuse of water quality. I want the truth. I don't feel like we're getting the truth right now. Thank you.
If I said hello, that might be two bad words, hell and low, so I'll say heaven high. So I am Galen Edinger. I own the property on 1018 Old Wadsworth. That's a cross for Church Ranch Corporation that just got sold, and they're doing a big senior citizens, low-income thing over there. So my complaint is I've been fined by the zoning people $11,000 for having 30 cars parked on my property that were movable, but they don't lower the rate at all. I'm down to 10 cars licensed and registered now, but it seems like $11,000 for penalties is more than it should be. I am 90% in compliance with the zoning commission, and I thought this was a heavy industry area. It's kind of a light industry area instead of a heavy, so I guess cars, I don't run a junkyard. I ran out of business in Denver. I was forced to go out of business, so I had to have a place to park my, I had 60 cars. I got rid of a whole bunch of them. I'm progressing. I only have 30 cars left. I got rid of those, and now I'm down to 10 cars. Hooray! So I'm asking you if you could possibly do something or tell me how I can get this $11,000 penalty for doing something bad, which I was making progress in retiring and simplifying my life and everything. So that's all I'm asking for. So God bless you all, and may you practice truth, justice, peace, and love in a nonviolent way.
Tanya Booker.
My name is Tanya Booker. I've lived in Westminster with my family for about eight years. I am an administrative assistant with the city, but tonight, I'm here as a resident because water quality is very important to me. I have been following the Stanley Lake boating issue very closely this year. I've listened to some of the meetings and the comments. I went to the April 2 meeting, and I wanted to come tonight because I wanted you to know that there are some residents here who are very glad that you're not allowing boats on the lake anymore. There are some residents here who understand the threat of zebra quagmussel infestation, and that it doesn't take, only takes one boat to get something started that cannot be reversed, and that it would cost tens of millions of dollars that the ratepayers would pay. I don't believe 500 families are going to pay tens of millions of dollars or boat retailers. The ratepayers would be paying that in perpetuity for a much lesser-quality drinking water than we have now. I've been to Las Vegas. I've tried their tap water. I would just like the record to show, and that's why I'm here, that there are some of us who are quite thankful and relieved that the city is going to protect our water source for the 300,000 people who depend on that water. Thank you.
Amy Lotus.
Good evening, mayor and council. I was previously in front of you in opposition of St. Mark Village. I thought I would come today to speak gratitude and kudos to the city of Westminster, to you, mayor, to our chief of police. I graduated the Westminster Police Department Citizens Police Academy just a month ago. Mayor, you came and spoke on our first evening. Counselor Demott, I know you were there, and he also handed out our graduation certificates a couple of weeks ago. I want to specifically just get into record my thanks to council, to the city of Westminster, Chief Carlson, investigator Luis Lopez, who leads the Citizens Police Academy, investigator Sherry Spocky, who is also the PIO and kind of the backup to Luis, the nights he wasn't there. As I looked at our graduation announcement, I counted up 41 police officers or employees and staff of the police department that gave their time voluntarily to all of us over the course of the 13 weeks of the police academy. It was beyond any expectation I have. I can look at our police department, oh, and Rich, I know you recently left the board, the alumni board, and I've joined the Alumni Association. I think the citizens of Westminster are missing out if they have the opportunity to take this academy and don't. It's unbelievable what our police officers and the police department does for our community. It was so enlightening. I had a positive view of the police prior, and now I just, yeah, we owe so much thanks to the men and women that keep us safe in our community. And I will end with, yes, I voluntarily got tased, and yes, it really, really hurts. Thank you so much, and I hope you will keep offering this to the citizens of Westminster.
Larry Isman.
Good evening, mayor, city council. Glad to be here. My name is Larry Isman. I'm here for Stanley Lake. I think you're probably a little bit tired of that, but we're not. My family and I have been boating at Stanley for over 25 years, and actually, before that, when I lived in Norvada as a kid, which is a long time ago, I rode my bike out from Norvada, and where the inlet is, there used to be a waterfall. I don't know if any of you know that, but we could climb back behind the waterfall, jump out under the water, hold your breath a long time, come up and swim into Stanley Lake. A little illegal, but we enjoyed it. As a matter of fact, I have a pair of boating shoes sitting in Skier's Cove. They're stuck in the mud. That's where I taught my daughters to ski. You'd hold her up, and my wife would drive away, and she would stand up, and she could ski. Well, that was fun, except they wore a nice pair of boating shoes, but they're there now. We have done our very best since we have been there to keep our boat pristine. When there's debris in the lake or on the shore, we pick it up. We've been very conscientious about the lake. And as a matter of fact, we bought property in Westminster. That was back when they had the lottery system. We didn't want to go through the lottery system, so we bought property in Westminster. Therefore, we didn't have to go through the lottery system, and we always had a pass. So I won't keep you any more on the personal issues, other than to let you know, that boat, that lake has been very important to a lot of people for a lot of time, and I believe that Lee Merritt was very clear in the first speaker, there are solutions. I'm just not convinced anybody's listening. There are solutions. If you want to listen, there are foolproof solutions, and I believe that anybody now that boats there that understands if you violate the rules, you have a lifetime ban, that almost by itself is sufficient. But there are solutions. Nothing hurt us more this year than when we would drive 86, 88 West around the lake and see that beautiful lake and no boats on it. It's a shame to waste that lake like that. Anyway, that's all. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council. My name is Tom Feeny. I'd like to congratulate all your volunteers and the decades of service all your personnel put in. You have a mandate to do something about Stanley Lake also. I see this as being not just a Westminster issue, it's a county issue, it's a state issue. It's a beautiful lake. I've enjoyed that lake for many, many decades, and there are solutions. You just need to find them, and they are there. I think you're getting some misinformation from your staff. I think the solutions are right in front of you, and you have the power to help it. This issue is not going to go away for you guys. Thank you very much for your time.
Mr. Greenwell.
Everyone, appreciate you allowing me to come up and speak. I'm going to use my cellphone here, not for recording anything, but just to keep my thoughts on track. First thing I just wanted to say, I think that all the boaters, as part of this community, share the same, you know, thoughts around having good water quality. And the lady who came up and spoke about that and boating being a huge issue, confronting that, I just guess I don't fully understand, right? I'm sure many of you are aware, maybe some of you aren't, boating's been allowed on Stanley since the '70s, and there's never been any issues of this kind in the past. There's never been any concern about water quality until, you know, last year. And I understand zebra mussels and things like that are a big concern for everyone, but I also think it's important to point out that the expert that was brought in to speak on the subject was talking about Lake Mead. They were talking about Lake Powell. They were talking about places in Oklahoma. In all the research that we've been able to find, the climate up here is too high of an altitude and too cold to support those mussels growing from larva into actual mussels. So to me, it's a little bit of an interesting dilemma here. And I think that as we're talking about water quality and zebra mussels and boats being the biggest thing affecting that, I'd like to remind everybody that Stanley Lake was a catch-all for rocky flats and all of the contamination that went through there, and nobody's talking about that, nobody's worried about that, everybody's totally fine drinking that water with contamination, but, you know, all of a sudden, there's an issue with the mussels. So first, I just wanted to kind of talk about the boating task force, because I haven't been on the task force, but I've been to a few of the meetings. I've been to lots of the community open houses to be able to speak on this topic. And one of the things I've noticed is just kind of a little bit of a lack of communication and transparency, and I make this case in point by talking about Jason Genk. Last time he was running the task force, the meeting that I was at, we had brought several solutions up, including the through-hole tagging system, including the RFID, including some of the GPS things. GPS was put on hold due to some of the technical issues that were happening, but one of the things that Jason called out at the very end of that meeting was, would everyone on this council feel comfortable moving forward with this as a potential solution, even without the no-key lock, the GPS system, if they were able to vet out the solutions that Kevin, that Britt, that Lee and other folks have been working on? And every single person on that task force, barring one, said, yes, we would feel comfortable moving forward with that. What happened next? A whole lot of nothing, no communication, no updates, no anything, until we received the note saying that boating would not be considered and was no longer going to be pursued. So to me, it's interesting that this task force put together to help find a safe course forward, found something that everyone, minus one, was able to say they felt comfortable moving forward as a solution, and yet it went nowhere. And while we had, folks, I know Kevin had spent hundreds of dollars getting cables and swages and RFID chips and things that were supposed to be vetted, Holly, as part of the Rangers, mentioned they'd be happy to have us come and help them vetting and testing these and trying to do that, because she was too short-staffed to be able to support it. All of those things, everyone was 100% in support of doing, and there was no action taken on that besides saying that there was no solution, which I find erroneous and a little bit offensive to everybody that's been spending the last nine months working their butts off for a solution, speaking about Britt, speaking about Lee, speaking about Kevin, and folks that have really been spearheading this. One of the things that I wanted to call out as well, and I brought this up in the task force, is between the cables, the swages, the RFID chips, the GPS locking, people were worried about hacking one system or finding a way to hack it. worried about hacking one system or finding a way to hack it. I, I just wanted to call out the fact that for somebody to be able to hack all of these systems, not only do they have to be extremely mechanically savvy to hack something undetectable through Rangers, they also have to have a computer degree to be able to hack the software to be able to do that. I'm just asking what type of person is really spending all that time and effort to bypass the Stanley Lake quarantine system? It just seems like we're looking for a solution to the equivalent of Fort Knox for something that I really don't think we're going to have an issue with, especially with the multiple layers of security that we have. And one of the things that I wanted to call out as well, several of the other lakes in Colorado have this already figured out. Cherry Creek is a drinking water source, Boulder Reservoir is a drinking water source, Carter, Horse Tooth, several others that I'm not even mentioning are drinking water sources, and they don't have any issue with zebra and quagga mussels. And the current system that they have in place to alleviate this seems to be good enough for just about everyone under the state. And yet, we're trying to come up with something that's so exhaustive, that's probably going to be one of the most exhaustive systems in the country, and yet that's not good enough, and this is something that shouldn't be considered. I, I just think that we're being strung along here with this, and I think that there's a reason that you are, are you using the zebra and quagga mussels as a scapegoat for something else, and there's something bigger at play, because we've shown time and time again that we are committed to finding a solution, and we've represented multiple solutions that should be more than adequate to take this forward, and yet we're not being given any consideration moving forward. So my time's up. I appreciate it. Thank you so much to all of you guys, friends of Stanley Lake, for the work you've done.
Mr. Terry.
Thank you, Mayor, and Council members. Britt Terry here with the Friends of Stanley Lake, kind of give you a, a report, an update. It was very disheartening, the news that came out last week. I think that news had been planned much longer than last week. Came as a bit of a surprise. Those of us in the task, in the tagging subcommittee had been working actively up until the day of that announcement. Little disingenuous. I've said this stuff before, I really feel like, from the beginning, the people who were challenged for mismanaging the lake for so many years, kind of heard about that. They then put them in charge of some new-fangled solution, probably outside of the scope of their realm of expertise. Upfront, we probably should have tried to get help, tried to get people from other places who secure prisons, nuclear facilities, stuff like that. If we really got to go to there, let's go get help, all right? The Friends of Stanley Lake brought forth so many solutions that were so much better than what we had for so many years, that worked fine. We really thought that we could, could come up with a solution and work hand-in-hand with the city. I will ask people to take a note. May fourteenth, we had a task force meeting that was on public record. As Kevin mentioned earlier, if you go to one hour, five minutes, just listen plus or minus a few minutes in there, you might want to listen ten minutes after, you will hear clearly the water quality manager, who makes the one and only vote in the city that is probably not vetoable, say, "I, Max Kirschbaum, will not accept any physical solution. Under my head of water quality, nothing physical will be acceptable to me." I asked Max at that time, I asked Jason, actually, who was running the meeting, if that was the city's stance, because if it was, we needed to start working on some other things and not waste the next six months. It's really, really disheartening what happened here, because I believe that that decision was already made, and here we are today. We did all this other stuff to put up a smokescreen and make it so that we had some recordings and some meetings. There was never an intent to get that lake open 100%. I used the analogy last meeting, I'll use it again. The Boston Marathon had a bombing. The day after that bombing, I will guarantee you, the city charter, who was put forth by the city council and all the people in staff, was not that we're going to not have the Boston Marathon. It was how are we going to have the Boston Marathon next year and have it be a thousand times safer than it was last year? And you know what? They've been successful. That treasure, that treasure that's the Boston Marathon still continues. Our treasure, the lake, which is important to the city, it's important to the state, it's important to the region, so many thousands and thousands of people, don't even count the money and revenue that it brought into the, the nice city Westminster, that's all kind of gone, because we decided we can't manage a resource. We didn't decide it couldn't, we just said we can't, all right? When that stops, that all goes away. That's a travesty. That's not how America works. We work through things, and we continue on with the best news we have from there and the best systems we can put in place going forward. It's very, very disheartening what's happened here. Friends of Stanley Lake's not done. I think we might have just started. My yellow shirt is faded. I'm embarrassed. I'll get a much brighter one for next time. I think we've got to continue to work together. So far, the communication that's come out officially from the city did not even leave a glimmer of hope that we're trying for, for 2021. It said all, all activities are ceased. Let's, don't let that happen. We have to work together. Let's find a way to make this system work so that water quality can be happy about what's going on, but maybe they shouldn't have the only one non-vetoable vote in the go-forward solution. By the way, water quality had that one non-vetoable vote for twelve years and did absolutely nothing proactive to make the system better. I don't think that's how we should move forward. I think we should work together and try and get to a common ground. Appreciate the time, and hopefully we get to work some more.
Here in Clavety.
I really signed up just as, so I could speak as a reaction to some of what I've heard. Yeah, ninety-nine forty, West Cliff Parkway. And the first speaker talked about the growth situation, and that has really been a concern of mine, and I think he expressed things quite well. We have a lot of dying centers, and we need to focus on that real estate first as, for, for future growth, rather than taking virgin property and some of our open space potential. But as far as the water supply, I, I've got to admit, I'm not a big fan of power boats on lakes, but I myself have seen what I thought was more of an excuse than a reason not to allow the boats, and that's been water quality. And I, my concern is if we're really concerned about water quality, we should stop using so many pesticides and herbicides, because they really contaminate water quality greater than oil or any other things that the boats, you know, emit on the lake. And I, I really think that that is a much bigger concern for water quality than having boats on, on Stanley Lake.
All right, is it this time, is anyone that has not had an opportunity to speak on the public comment period that is not here for the two public hearings that we have coming up later on the agenda? Okay. This time, I'm going to close the public comment period. So before we start with the report of the city officials or city council comments, I'm going to call it a short break, so we can grab a quick bio break, then we will come back. So we are in recess at this time.
My boss. Yeah, good to see you. Good as well. Hi. Yeah, I know, yeah.
No's doing pretty well.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, if we could reconvene, council, if we can get everybody back to their spots. Okay, just for the record, it's approximately eight twenty-one, and the council is back in session. Next item on the agenda will be the Report of City Officials. Mr. Tripp.
Yes, Mayor and members of council, and those that are remaining in the audience from the previous conversation. Just very briefly, we made a decision that we believe to be in the best interest of our community. I, I stand behind that, and I stand behind the fact that there were lots of people who worked very hard as a staff to look for solutions, and we're very committed to attempting to find a solution and to meet the, the charter of the, of the Stanley Lake Committee. We didn't find that. Having said that, I want you to know that we also have extraordinary empathy and feel very, very badly about removing boating from the lake. It has an historical perspective that has continued to be shared. You know, before I did this job, I was a Parks Recreation Director, and I love that property. I, I, many of the people who came up spoke very passionately about the years that they've spent caring for that lake, and, you know, that's, just so you understand, we're really, really sad about that. We're really sad about that, and we tried very hard to find a solution, and I just want to reassure you of that fact.
Council, any comments at this time? All right, seeing none, move on to the next item is the, you got one?
So I just wanted to thank everyone who had come out tonight for a public comment, whatever your passion is. It's not always easy to come before council, whether that's positive or saying something positive or fighting for a change. So I just wanted to thank you for that, and thank you for the information done for, and staff for all their hard work, and for our Boating Task Force for theirs as well. I would have to, I would have to ask that we continue to look at all solutions and all options on this, and I know that we're having conversations about that. And so I just wanted to just say that it's not over as far as finding solutions, and I will work to, to find, it doesn't quite make sense to me, and if it doesn't quite make sense to you, I wouldn't presume that it would make sense to everyone else. So thank you, and, yeah.
Mr. Demott.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, everybody who came and spoke. I'm very grateful that people are still engaged in the, the conversation. I don't know how many of you heard any of the conversation in the pre-meeting. A couple of us still have unanswered questions, I guess is the best way to put it, from how this process has gotten us from when they first put a boat, boating ban to where we're at right now and everything in between. So I certainly have questions that I have with staff that I'd like to have answered. I know where we're at today, and I don't think anybody in this room has spoken anything but wanting to make sure the water's safe first and foremost, but also I understand the want for solutions and making sure that we're on an equal playing field as far as wanting the same thing. I don't know where things will go from here. From my end, I'm going to continue Um, from my end, I'm going to continue to ask questions so I can understand it as well. Um, like Counselor Smith said, I have a lot of unanswered questions, as like she does, and I'm trying to understand exactly how everything has went down. Um, so I appreciate your engagement, and I hope that, you know, we'll continue to hear from you folks as you have questions, um, and I look forward to hearing the answers to my questions from staff that we have given them earlier on in the evening.
Any other comments? Okay. Moving on to the next item, this is the consent agenda, this is, uh, an item of routine, uh, business for the city. This is the second reading on the Council's Bill Number 44. Ms. Sykes.
Thank you. I move that the City Council adopt the consent agenda, item 8A.
Mr. Vols.
Second.
Okay, you have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please use your lights. And the motion passes on a 6-0 vote. Next item up on the agenda is the second amended preliminary development plan for Interchange Business Center filing number one. Staff, Ms. McConnell and Patrick?
Um, good evening. Um, my name is Patrick Caldwell. I'm a senior planner with the City's Planning Division. I'm the planner for this proposal. The La Quinta Inn has proposed a hotel use for Lot 6 in the Interchange Business Center PDP. Okay, there we go. And also proposed are three exceptions to the landscape standards. Tonight, the applicant is seeking your approval of the PDP amendment to add hotel use as an allowed use on Lot 6 and the three exceptions to the landscape standards. To add a land use to the PDP, a public hearing with public notices required prior to approval by the City Council. A staff agenda memo has been created, and tonight's public hearing has been properly noticed. At this time, I'll enter into the public record the agenda memo and its associated attachments, tonight's PowerPoint presentation, the notice published in the Westminster Window on the 28th of November, 2019, notice mailed to property owners within 300 feet on November 28th, 2019, and the notice posted on the property on November 28th, 2019. The Lot 6 is 1.8 acres with an address of 290 West 136th Avenue. The lot is immediately west of the Walmart store. The lot does not have frontage on 136th Avenue, but is at the east side of Orchard Parkway, just south of the Taco John's Restaurant. Section 11514 of the Westminster Municipal Code contends, contains 10 criteria that are to be the basis of consideration for approval of PDP amendments. Staff finds that the PDP application generally meets these criteria as outlined in the agenda memo. The first four criteria are that the PDP is, is in conformance with applicable codes, it follows appropriate planning principles, and it identifies any exceptions sought, and that the PDP is compatible with surrounding development. Exceptions to the City's landscape regulations are noted in the PDP for the ODP that has been reviewed concurrently with this PDP. Criteria five through seven ensure that the product, project does not adversely affect and is not adversely affected by surrounding development, and that travel to and from the intended project site is safely established. The traffic study indicated that the existing roads, signals, sidewalks, and other infrastructure are adequate and can accommodate a hotel use on Lot 6 with no adverse effects to surrounding property. The final three criteria ensure that the project may meet any land dedications that may be needed to facilitate its development, that a corresponding ODP will be able to meet the criteria of the PDP, and that the applicant does not have any outstanding obligations to the city. All dedications were made with the Walmart development in 2005, and none are due at this time. The applicant for this project will be addressing these 10 ODP criteria further in their presentation. On November 12th, 2019, the Westminster Planning Commission reviewed the proposed amendment to the Interchange Business Center PDP. With a 7-0 vote, Planning Commission recommended the Westminster City Council approve the second amended preliminary development plan, Interchange Business Center filing number one. Staff recommends the City Council approve the second amended preliminary development plan, Interchange Business Center filing number one. The recommendation adds hotel use as an allowed use on Lot 6, and recommends three exceptions to the landscape regulations for small encroachments into the landscape setback. The recommendation is based on a finding that the proposed PDP amendment generally meets all of the criteria set for in 11514 of the Westminster Municipal Code. Staff believes that this proposed PDP amendment will support a dynamic and diverse economy. The city fosters social, economic, and environmental vitality, and cultivates and strengthens a wide variety of economic opportunities. Adding hotel use as an allowable use in the Interchange Business Center PDP is consistent with this goal. The applicant is with us tonight and has a presentation to share with you as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Caldwell. Before we open it up to the applicant, council, do you have any questions of staff on the presentation material so far? Ms. Sykes?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I have a, a quick question. I want to make sure I'm clear on this. Obviously, this is a use that we're saying is already, um, allowed under the, the current zoning under the comprehensive plan, um, and this change within the PDP just is in conformance with that. My second question to you, so that's just one, wanting to make sure I'm clarifying and that everyone here knows that this is not a comprehensive plan change. Um, I'd like to know about the change in water consumption. Hotels are notoriously, um, high water consumers, however, so are restaurants, and I know this was retail, this is retail commercial, so is there a delta, is there a difference between what, um, staff had contemplated for water consumption for this parcel and what it will be under this new designation? Those are my two questions.
Well, I believe you've correctly stated your interpretation of, um, zoning designation there. On the issue of water, we, um, you know, we check, uh, these uses against water budget, and I'm going to ask, um, that either the planning staff, or if you want to have the Public Works Director come up, however you want to handle the, answer that question.
If the Public Works Director is here, I'd prefer they address this.
Mr. Kirschbaum, would you or one of your staff members like to address the question this before council?
Max Kirschbaum, Public Works and Utilities Director. I have not seen the specific proposal, but it is consistent with the comprehensive plan, therefore, it's safe to assume that the, the use for this hotel would be consistent with the comp plan.
And would already have been accounted for in our modern budget.
It would have been accounted for in the 2013, uh, water supply plan that is, in fact, under revision even as we speak, but it would be consistent with the comp plan.
Thank you.
Other questions of the staff presentation from council? Ms. Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I understand that this is already accounted for in the comprehensive plan, but, um, we are in changes for that plan as far as next year. So what would be the benefit for cost analysis benefit of having postponing this until next year, until the comp plan is done, so that we can see in totality of what it would look
Well, if the development didn't happen, we'd gain that much bandwidth, so to speak, of water availability, but I, I would defer to legal and also to, to planning, um, really to respond to, we have an applicant here who's come in and proposed a development to us that's within our current comprehensive planning, and so I think you've got the recommendation tonight because it meets those requirements of that plan. Um, as we move forward, uh, we look, um, into the, when you have a chance to approve the next plan, we'll be recalculating for that. As was mentioned earlier this evening by one of our speakers, um, this does exist within, um, one of those areas where we had planned for, uh, denser development, higher water use, and, uh, so to that end also, I'd say that, um, it's supportable, but, um, if you didn't approve it and the project wasn't built, uh, we'd lose the project and lose the benefits of that project and its impact on the air, the regional economy, uh, but we would gain water capacity. Um, but I, I believe the recommendation in front of you is here this evening because it does meet the requirements of our current planning.
Mr. Feinkel.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, just to follow up on what something that your trip said, the, the North I-25 focus area, um, I believe does depict this as a zone of retail commercial.
That's right.
Um, and I, my understanding is that the comp plan does contemplate the hotel use, it's just that the PUD within which this property is located, the PUD, uh, would have to specify allowed uses, um, and if, if I'm not incorrect, I understand that PUD used to contemplate hotel use here, but at one point that was removed and is now sought to be reinstated.
That's correct.
So when, when the comp plan was adopted, uh, hotel use was something that was accounted for at this location, um, and I don't know that there's any plan to change the comp plan on this property to something that wouldn't allow this type of development. So if, if, if your question is, you know, hey, if there's something coming next year as the comp plan is updated that would be inconsistent with this, that would probably be important to know. I'm not aware of anything coming that's proposed to be inconsistent with this use, though.
That's correct.
Is that the answer to your question?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Mr. Demont.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Kind of just a question of, of how this comp plan stuff goes, because I know this has been a concern of mine as we move forward because just the idea of the goalpost moving. I don't, like, everything makes sense for this one, that it really probably doesn't matter that much, but just forward thinking, is there going to be a point where when we have these kind of hearings, and maybe you can answer this after, but I want to ask it while I'm thinking about it, as we come up with the new comp plan, that you, like, uh, the attorney just mentioned, like, this isn't changed in the comp plan, or it's not being looked at as being changed in the new comp plan, will we start hearing some of that as we get closer to a new comp plan, so we can anticipate as things go forward that we're not doing something that's against the new comp plan? I guess is my concern, and that's been my concern in, in previous hearings.
If we see a proposal that is contrary to where we're going with the new comp plan, we would be concerned about that as well, and we would identify that.
Great, so, so we're already actively doing that when you bring these forward?
Yes, we are having conversations about future land uses and what may be changed in the future. Um, the cases that you have been getting are not contrary to where we're going, including this one tonight.
Great, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Other questions from council of staff before we open it up to the applicant? All right, seeing none, if the applicant would like to come forward and identify yourself, please.
Yeah, one more, it's right here.
Good evening. Good evening. My name is Tom Jarman. I'm the architect associated with this project. Kumar Merchant is the owner. He's also here this evening. As stated, the request is for a PDP amendment, uh, to, to reinstate hotel use on this site. There are also some minor, there are some minor, minor, uh, landscape setback encroachments along Orchard Parkway that are more than made up for with additional landscape on other areas of the site. These are building elevations for the, for the hotel. Hotel is a good fit for this site based on its proximity to I-25 and the interchange at 136, the proximity of restaurants nearby. The traffic study shows that hotel generates less traffic than a traditional retail, and the roads and utility infrastructure are already in place. We request this approval of, of the PC, PDP amendment and the minor exceptions to the setbacks, and we look forward to the opportunity to become a part of the Westminster community. Thank you.
Don't go away.
For any questions?
Yeah, don't go away in case there are any.
All right.
Counselor, are there any questions of the applicant? Mr. Vols?
Yeah, thank you for being here tonight. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Where are the, uh, you mentioned there were some adjustments to the landscaping setbacks for the three exceptions and you made others.
If you're using the pointer, we can't see it.
Oh, okay. It's, it's along Orchard Parkway, there's a drive area there. Because of the irregular shape of the lot, uh, it's not a rectangular lot that facilitates parking and drives, so there's a minor encroachment there, if you can see where the drive encroaches slightly, and then there's, I believe, a couple of parking spaces that have a slight encroachment, maybe a small triangle of the section.
Okay, so it's the area along Orchard Parkway?
Correct.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Other questions, counsel or the applicant? All right, sir, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions of either the applicant or staff before we open this up to the public? All right, seeing none, at this time, I will open the, uh, public hearing up to the, anyone in the public or in the audience who has any comments of any nature either for or against the application. And seeing none, I will close the public hearing, and I will ask that the staff has submitted this, and all records are filed with the city?
Yes.
All right, thank you, Mr. Caldwell. This time, I will open the, uh, up for a motion for this, and I will turn to Mr. Demont for item 82.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve the second amended preliminary development plan for the Interchange Business Center filing number one.
Is there a second? Ms. Sykes?
Second.
Okay, you have a motion and a second. Is there any comments or questions from, uh, council in regards to this application? If not, this is a move with your button, if you would, please. And this motion passes on a 6-0 vote. Congratulations, gentlemen, we look to having you here in the center.
Thanks very much.
Our next item will be a second public hearing. This is on Council's Bill Number 46, amending the zoning in the subject property at, uh, West 88th Avenue in the intersection with Pierce Street. Mr. Girman? McConnell, I think you're up again.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor ProTAM and counselors of the Westminster City Council. My name is David Girman. I am a senior planner with the City's Planning Division. It's my pleasure to be speaking with you all this evening. Tonight, I will be presenting a rezoning and preliminary development plan proposal for the Excel Energy Semper Substation for your consideration. Excel Energy has made application to rezone the property located at 6787 West 88th Avenue to facilitate installation of a new 105-foot-tall monopole to support the company's Field Area Network, or FAN, project. The FAN project is intended to assist Excel's new intelligent advanced grid system. This system will help Excel to provide faster, more efficient service, as well as to better manage system problems and outages. The pole would not be used by private carriers such as Verizon or T-Mobile, or by other utilities. All of the poles in the network are located on Excel property and will be used exclusively by Excel to manage their system. As part of this rezoning effort, a PDP has been created, and this document has been included in your packets for your review. As required by statute, a notice of public hearing sign was posted on the applicant's property on the north side of West 88th Avenue. One sign was posted near the entrance, as shown in this photo. Also required by statute, the applicant has mailed notices of this public hearing to all property owners within 300 feet of this property boundary. Here you can see the applicant's certification of this mailing. The notice was also published in the Westminster Window on November 28th, 2019, meeting the requirement. The notice was also published in the Westminster window on November 28, 2019, meeting the requirement of being posted 10 days before this hearing. The staff agenda memo, its associated attachments, tonight's presentation, and the public notices mailed, posted, and published are hereby entered into the public record at this time. Here is a map of the area under consideration. The property is located immediately west of the Westminster Municipal Service Center and south of the Semper Water Treatment Site. Across 88th Avenue, south of the property, are the Arbor Green Town Homes and Golf Course, which are located within the city of Vrata. If approved, the new monopole would be located near the northeast corner of the Excel site. The property is currently used for electrical transmission equipment. Section 1153 of the Westminster Municipal Code contains two criteria that are to be the basis of consideration for approvals of zonings and rezonings. Staff finds that the rezoning application meets this criteria, these criteria, as outlined in the agenda memo, as it would be in conformance with the city's comprehensive plan. Rezoning of the property also meets city policies and standards, as well as sound planning principles and practice. Staff also finds that impact to the city's infrastructure will be negligible. The PDP will serve as a zoning document for this project. The criteria for approval of the PDP will be examined in the following slides. Section 11514 of the Westminster Municipal Code contains 10 criteria upon which to base consideration of approval of PDP amendments. Staff finds the PDP application meets the criteria as outlined in the agenda memo. The first four of these criteria are that the PDP is in conformance with applicable codes, follows appropriate planning principles, identifies any exceptions, and that the PDP is compatible with surrounding development. The site is currently being used for utility purposes only, and development of this new monopole would be compatible with the site and the surrounding area. Although the height of the new monopole is unique to the area, there are several other large poles that have been installed in and around the property. The project also does not request any exceptions to the criteria. Criteria five through seven ensure that the project is not adversely affected, nor does it adversely affect any surrounding development, and that travel to and from the intended project site is safely established. No access will be affected with the installation of this new pole. Nothing about the site will be changed except for the addition of this pole in the northeast corner of the lot. Criteria eight through 10, the final three criteria, ensure that the project may meet any land dedications that may be needed to facilitate its development, none are needed, that a corresponding ODP will be able to meet the criteria established for approval of the ODP, and that the applicant does not have any outstanding obligations to the city, which is correct. This site is not undergoing any expansion except for the addition of the new monopole. The current land use acreage and access to the site will all remain the same, and the corresponding ODP will detail the monopole location and specifications. The Semper FAN project was presented at the Planning Commission on October 22, 2019. There was no opposition to this project voiced at the meeting. The Planning Commission voted unanimously to recommend approval of the rezoning and the PDP to City Council this evening. Tonight, staff recommends holding this public hearing to review this proposal, and that the City Council approve the rezoning and the PDP based on the finding that these applications meet all of the criteria set forth in Sections 1153 and 11514 of the Westminster Municipal Code, respectively. If approved, this project will allow for the installation of a new 105-foot monopole at an existing substation facility, which supports the Excel Field Area Network project and intelligence, intelligent advanced grid system. Staff finds that this application meets both of the following strategic, city strategic plan goals: one, to provide visionary leadership, effective governance, and proactive regional collaboration; and two, to promote financially sustainable government providing excellence in city services. Thank you for your attention, and I would be happy to answer any questions that you may have. The applicant is also here tonight and has a presentation for you as well, and we will both be available to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Gorman. Counsel, I understand that there are questions of the applicant, of the application, and the staff will take those at this time. Mr. Demont, you're up.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for the presentation, Mr. Gorman. One quick question, you had mentioned that they, this is only going to be used by Excel. Is there anything in this that would restrict them in the future from allowing other people to use this pole?
Well, there are two things, if I may, sir. On the legal side of it, the documents themselves refer to only public utility uses. So for example, a private carrier such as Verizon or T-Mobile, they'd have to come before you and have that document changed to allow a private use on the pole. So that's the first prohibition. The second is that Excel Energy itself is very adamant, and has been for the entire length of this project, in that there's a security factor involved here. If someone were to have equipment mounted on this pole, as an example, and it somehow interfered, it could be very, very potentially dangerous or bad for transmission of gas and electric services. So from that perspective, they themselves want no one else there.
Great, thank you very much.
You're welcome, sir.
Ms. Sykes?
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. I have a quick question in regards to the height of the pole. I know it's, you did a very good job detailing in this report, and thank you for such a well-written report, kind of the different options that Excel was faced with for the same level of service. Can you talk a little bit about how we felt 105-foot tower was preferable to the, I believe, six other smaller substations? And if possible, I know you gave us really great illustrations of what it will look like, but can you talk about visibility and impact a little bit?
Sure. Just as a starting point, our applicant's presentation will have some color photo mockups that'll further illustrate. But if you're familiar with the site, we do have, first of all, a lot of infrastructure that's already in place in the, in form of very large, I'm going to call them, and you guys have to correct me when you come up, high-power electrical line stanchions that are already in place. They are not as tall, but they help to mask and conceal what you're looking at so that you don't really spend a lot of time focusing on this, on this pole. Second of all, there is a great deal of space around this site that is of an industrial or a similar nature to industrial, and also to the south you have the street, the golf course, large open expanses of land that help to, again, diffuse the impact, the visual impact. The third thing that you'll run into is the finishes, colors, and so forth are going to be the same kind of muted colors, again, not to attract any attention. And then the final thing I would point out, and of course, our applicant may have some other ideas for you as well, is that imagine this as a very small speck on the top of a very large pole, and so unless you're very close to it and looking right at it, it's not really going to call attention to itself. For example, 105-foot-tall building, which has a great deal of mass, is obviously, you're going to catch your eye, it's going to hold your attention. This is really going to be something that unless you're specifically looking for it, is really not going to have the same visual impact.
Thank you so much.
Yes, ma'am.
Other questions of staff at this time from the council? If not, Mr. Gibson, I think you're up. No.
You want to do it? Great.
All right, we'll get to you before you get away tonight. If you would, please, sir, identify yourself and who you're representing.
Good evening. My name is Jackson Fagan. I'm an employee of Excel Energy at 1800 Laramore Street in Denver. And as you know, I'm here to respectfully request your approval of a rezoning and PDP. Like Mr. Gorman said, this is a, the specifics or the general nature of the proposal is a 105-foot steel monopole to support communications infrastructure strictly for the use of Excel Energy, for our internal communication system. We would not allow commercial carriers on the pole. And as Mr. Gorman stated, there are restrictions in the PDP document that would not allow that. So I'll give a little detail in terms of what the system is that this project or the approval of your, approval tonight would support. So it's called the Field Area Network, which is part of our overall smart grid program. And it's a wireless, non-commercial communication network, like I said, strictly internal to our system. And it would connect a series of intelligent devices on electrical meters, on the electrical distribution, and the electrical transmission system back with our control center in Golden. That will enable us to really understand what's going on on the system in real time. We have some knowledge of that today, but for example, when a, when a, you know, a tree falls down on a power line, we're typically relying on people to call in and, or report through the website, but that's a much slower way for things to happen than knowing instantaneously when an outage happens. That's just one benefit, but it'll give us a much more comprehensive understanding of what's going on on our system, and will be a great benefit to customers. And that's, this is going on throughout our service territory. We have, I believe, 50 of these approved at this point, and we're trying to, I think we have 20 more to go. So it's going to really cover our entire service territory, hopefully. So this diagram tries to show how the system works. It's a, first of all, there's meters on, there's devices on meters that are sending a wireless signal, and also devices on the distribution system. They send a wireless signal back to relays on the distribution system, usually on overhead poles. Those send a wireless signal back to these fan towers, like what we're proposing now, and then those are connected through fiber optic, hardwired back to the control center. And there's two-way signals going back and forth. I think I went through these benefits. You know, we have a better understanding of the grid, we can isolate faults, sometimes fix things remotely. It's not just getting a, getting patrolmen out there quicker. We could actually just fix something instantaneously. It's a big benefit. Yeah, reducing duration and proactively preventing power loss. Additionally, another benefit is we're building more and more renewable energy generation capacity, and allowing, having greater understanding of where power is needed is really important for pushing renewable energy through to the right places at the right time. So that's another great benefit of this. I think you already understand where the site is. I guess while I'm on an overhead aerial, I'd like to address the height question. So we're proposing this at 105 feet. Your zoning code, or the existing zoning here, has a maximum of 65 feet. So when we were initially talking about this with the city, we ended up doing a modeling what it would look like if, say, we had a 65-foot tower at this location, we would need four other towers in the area to basically provide the same level of service as this 105-foot tower would. And those, they wouldn't be 105 feet, you would have no 105-foot-tall structures, but you would have five new 65-foot structures. And they, you know, this structure is proposed in an industrial location, already has the tallest transmission structure there is 70 feet. So it is taller than that, but it's a relatively compatible land use then, and there's a commercial stuff around it, other land uses. So yeah, you can ask me more questions later if you want. Yeah, it's in the northeast corner of the site. This shows a schematic of what it would look like. The antennas are, as Mr. Gorman stated, quite, they're pretty small. This shows a photo simulation looking northwest from 88th. And this shows what it looks like today, and you can see the pole kind of simulated on there. We get asked about co-location a lot, basically in two ways. One is, why don't we locate the tower, or why don't we locate the antennas on existing, say, Verizon structure, and why don't we allow other providers on our structure? A lot of cities actually want, want us to be willing to co-locate, say, Verizon antenna on our tower, but it sounds like you all would not want that. But in any case, that's not what we want. We're, you know, regulated federally to protect this type of data, and cybersecurity is a huge concern. We don't want to share, let anyone have access to this data. So in both those scenarios, it's, we would be allowing other entities up on our structure, and it just, it wouldn't be feasible for us, so. I think we already went through how it complies with your code. We believe it does comply with your regulations, this project, and respectfully request your approval.
Counsel, any questions of the applicant at this time?
Yeah, thank you for being here and for your presentation. I have a, technology is constantly changing, so if the technology that requires this kind of 105-foot pole is no longer in use, who takes the pole down, or will it come down, or what happens in that circumstance? If it's, say, down the road, we don't need that kind of technology any longer, there's a better way of doing it than having a pole sticking up there?
Well, it would be on our property, and so you're saying if we didn't need it anymore, what would we do with it?
Yes, right.
I think, I don't think we'd have any desire to maintain something that, you know, it's beyond just supporting technology, it's a structural thing. And after so many years, it's going to need to be painted to not rust, or maintained to not fall over, and I think we would, in that, definitely want to get, you know, take it down, and that would be our responsibility as the landowner.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah.
Ms. Sykes?
Hi, thank you so much for your presentation. I have a quick question, and it's similar to the vein of Counselor Vols. I think you gave a lot of really good public policy reasons for why you want to invest in this, the FAR. I can't remember that, but the...
FAR, Field Area Network.
Yes, or FAN, FAN. Could that potentially be expanded if, for like distributed generation and some, you know, there is evolving smart grid technologies? And do you feel that this technology allows you to be more nimble to provide best-in-class services to residents?
It certainly allows us, as I said, to have a way better understanding of what's happening. I'm not the technical expert that can speak to how this would connect with distributed generation, for example. I think this is principally supporting, I guess, centralized distribution. But yeah, I can't really accurately speak to, speak to that.
That is fine, thank you, I appreciate it.
Can I just say, Preston Gibson of Excel, it does allow us to more seamlessly add distributed photovoltaic energy onto our system. You know, our system was built to be a one-way delivery of electrons, and now we have electrons going the other direction because people are generating them.
Correct.
And this enables us to better understand the flow of that electricity instantaneously, and monitor that and send that in the right direction so we can better utilize our resources. So it does provide that benefit. It also provides a benefit of being able to instantaneously monitor the electricity that you're using as a resident. You'll be able to do that, we'll be able to do that, and we can offer different pricing programs because of that. Some may benefit residents just because of the way you use your energy.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Other questions of the applicant? Mr. Gibson, since you've got all the technical data, how is the FAN system compared with your SCADA system? How are they used?
We have a technical guy here.
Oh, yeah, sure. I just wanted to hot foot Preston in the hot seat, really.
My name is Dell Covington. Yeah, and I'm a Field Area Network RF specialist located out of the Material Distribution Center. Speed, everything is more fast. So the SCADA system typically works off serial data, 9600 baud rate. We're going to be talking about 1 gigabit per second possibilities in the future with no change out of equipment, other than radios at the base. So speed, low latency, very quick, very accurate, real-time data. Yep.
Can I still pick on Preston?
Sure.
Will this, will this help identify the streetlights that aren't working?
I'll go look on the way home.
I'll give you some addresses to start working from. Any other questions of the applicant or anybody on the council? Mr. Gorman, the application is complete, it's been submitted and approved by the Planning Commission for recommendation?
Yes, sir, that is correct.
Okay. Any other questions of either staff or the applicant by the council? Vols, you have a question?
I just had one minor, minor point. In your presentation, you said that Plan, Planning Commission passed it 6-0, but then in all of our materials, it says 5-0. So it's unanimous regardless, but just, I did see an inconsistency there.
Yes, that is correct. It was unanimous. I must, I must tell you, I was not at the Planning Commission meeting, so I can't, I can't be more accurate, I apologize.
All right, if there are no other questions of the staff from the council or from the applicant, I'll open it up to the public at this time. If there's anyone who wants to come forward to voice an opinion of either... to come forward to voice an opinion of either support or denial of this application, please come forward at this time and be identified. Seeing none, we will close the public hearing. At this time, I'll move to a motion for Assistant Counsel for, Council's Bill Number 46. Ms. Seitz?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to pass Counselors' Bill Number 46, amending the zoning of the subject property of a 1.435-acre parcel generally located 700 feet west of the West 88th Avenue intersection with Pierce Street, addressed as 6787 West 88th Avenue, from commercially zoned to a planned unit development.
Mr. Demont, second. I have a motion and a second. Is any discussion further by council? Ms. Seitz?
Yes, I'm going to be voting in support of this. I do feel that it's met the criteria that's put forward, as staff describes in their agenda, their staff report. I also want to say specifically that I would expand the first criteria, which says it's in conformance with our policies, plans, and other zoning. I think this is in support of many of our comprehensive plan goals. And so, specifically, some of our sustainability ones, I think supporting smart grid technology is something that benefits our residents beyond the slight inconvenience of every now and then seeing a very narrow, tall pole. So, I will be voting in support, and I also want to say I appreciate seeing a utility that is investing in their infrastructure. We've all seen what happens when we don't have that same level of care, so we are very fortunate.
Yeah, I want to also piggyback on what Counselor Seitz just said, or Mayor Protem Seitz. I plan on supporting this tonight for the criteria reasons. It's harmonious with the surrounding area, and it doesn't appear to have any significant adverse impacts to future land use in that area. So, I will also be supporting that. Thank you.
Other questions or comments from the council? Ms. Fitch, this is a roll call vote, if you will, please.
Mayor Atchison.
Yes.
Counselor Demont.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Seitz.
Yes.
Counselor Seymour.
Yes.
Counselor Scully.
Counselor Smith.
Counselor Vols.
Yes.
One more button there, we're going to, all right. Motion passes on a 6-0 vote. Ms. Seitz, will you take care of B3, please?
I will. Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the preliminary development plan for the Semper Substation Field Area Network Fan Project.
Mr. Demont?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is any other discussions by council? Seeing none, this is a vote with your buttons, please. And the motion also carries on a 6-0 vote. Thank you very much. Preston, you squeaked by again.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Counselors.
Thank you, guys, for coming tonight. Counsel, the next item up is Item 10C. This is Counselors' Bill Number 47. Mr. Demont?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to pass Counselor Bill Number 47 on first reading, authorizing the city manager to execute two amendments to waste lease agreements with Aggregate Industries, WCR, Inc.
Mr. Seymour?
Second.
If I could, just one correction. If the maker of the motion would be willing, I think it was inadvertently read as waste lease instead of water lease.
Would you like to restate the motion, sir?
Water lease agreements and Aggrega Industry, WCR, Inc.
Okay. And the second of the motion is okay with the change?
I will continue my second.
Okay. We have before us a motion for, and a second for Council Bill Number 47. Is there any discussion by council? Ms. Seitz?
Hi, I would like to ask staff if they're willing. A very well-written staff report was included with this item for council to review, but water has been an issue of a lot of public interest and concern this year, and I thought it might be beneficial to have on the record someone come and describe what this lease agreement is.
Mr. Tripp?
Mr. Kirschbaum? This water lease agreement has two components to it. And like other leases of water, which we do have, there is a couple of primary purposes for it. One, it's a small generator of revenue to the utility. In this case, the figures are in your packet on the possible projections, but between the two, probably less than about $80,000. The other benefit that leases offer us is the opportunity for beneficial use of those waters for which we do not otherwise have a stated or specific purpose. So, in one of these cases, the water in question is largely wastewater treatment plant effluent that is released back to Big Dry Creek, and ultimately makes its way to the South Platte. We take advantage of the reuse of that water whenever we can for the beneficial use of the city of Westminster, but there are times and days when that effluent may be in excess to our need. And this, the leasing of that water, then, allows us to actually demonstrate use and attain some level of revenue. Also, in this particular case, the leases are with, with and for Aggrega Industries, who we've had nearly a 20-year agreement to construct downstream reservoirs for us. As you know, you've already approved the payment for the first increment of that downstream storage, and that payment will be made either this month or next month, depending on closing documents. But there are, that is not the full extent of that agreement. There are other reservoir capacity cells being built under the same agreement. In this particular case, this lease just extends the consumable use of that water with Aggrega Industries, who is doing the mining for an additional two years. But there's two distinct benefits in our case. I should also mention that in no way, shape, or form does this, does a lease like this, or any other lease, impact our water supply or the rates that we charge to our customers. Not now, and not in any other lease that we do. It allows us, in fact, to gain a little bit of revenue benefit from water that we would otherwise not be able to gain that revenue.
Any other questions?
Just to confirm, for folks who maybe aren't as familiar with Colorado water law, the benefit, as I understand, of this beneficial use is it, water rights, it's not just that you have a senior water right, but it's also that you can prove that you've had beneficial use. And so, this is actually protecting the city's $1 billion water rights asset.
It's helpful to us in that regard.
Okay, thank you so much for this.
Other questions or comments from either staff? Seeing none, ladies and gentlemen, this is a vote with your button, please. Still waiting on one more. All right, got it. That one is on roll call, I'm sorry. Trying to get to the next one. Ms. Fitch, would you please repeat that as a roll call?
Counselor Demont.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Seitz.
Yes.
Counselor Seymour.
Yes.
Counselor Smith.
Yes.
Counselor Vols.
Yes.
Mayor Atchison.
Yes. Motion is carried on a 6-0 vote. Next item up is Item 10D. Mr. Demont?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move based on the recommendation of the city manager to find that the public interest would be best served by a sole-source negotiated contract with Wink Associates, Inc., for design and construction documents of the Benton Street streetscape and connecting streets in downtown Westminster, and authorize the city manager to execute a contract for design, construction, documentation, developer, bidding assistant, and construction observation in the amount of $161,840, with a 10% contingency of $16,184 for a total project authorized expenditure not to exceed $178,024.
Mr. Vols?
I second the motion.
I have a motion and a second. Is any discussion by council? Ms. Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for putting the staff report together, but I just cannot get behind this one. I'm really conflicted as far as having us do it now versus us having developers and other designers. I understand that there can be a conflict when you have multiple parties involved in trying to interpret construction plans. So, for this one, I just can't get there.
Okay. Other comments from council? All right, this is the item with the button, vote with your buttons, please. And the motion passes on a 5-1 vote. Next item on the agenda is Item 10E. Mr. Seymour?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move based on the recommendation of the city manager to find that the public interest will be best served by a sole-source negotiated contract with Bainer Sculpture LLC. Award the contract to Bainer Sculpture LLC for the fabrication and installation of the Air Force statue as part of the Armed Forces Tribute Garden, and authorize the city manager to execute the contract in an amount of $105,000, plus an additional $10,500 for contingency, for a total authorized expenditure of $115,500.
Ms. Smith?
I'm sorry, Ms. Seitz? Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is any discussion on this item by council? Mr. Vols?
I just want to say, yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. What a tremendous partnership this is with Ball Aerospace. So, I commend the team who put this together. There's a lot of folks who are involved in this, and I think it's a tremendous partnership. I think I read in the background materials that the remaining sculptures, well, there will be a tip to the hat of diversity amongst those remaining sculptures, which I also think is important. Thank you.
Other comments? Just for the public, this donation from Ball Corporation came as a commitment, a personal commitment from Mr. John Hayes, the president of Ball. And from John's comments, he's opened it up to potential contributions from within his employee base. Ball Corporation has about 30% of their employee base that is veterans. They reached out to them to raise what they can, but the guarantee of this money came from a personal contribution from Mr. Hayes. We have been very fortunate to get the first, first three of six. We thought we had two more committed. Fortunately, that commitment has been withdrawn for their reasons. And we are still attempting to identify and raise funds at about $150,000 per statue for each of the remaining three. Knowing that we will probably not get the other three in time for the tribute this year, we still are very much inclined to move forward to trying to raise that. And for the corporations who may have the opportunity or have a desire, we will take anybody's money for this. We're not prejudiced in any way. But one of the things I would tell you is that we have one particular one that's under construction right now from the United States Coast Guard, and we have as a real model, and she was here earlier this year at the Tribute Garden, one of the first Coast Guard rescued divers, as a female, that the statue is being modeled after her, and she has been here several times, meeting with the architect and stuff to get her and her uniform to the level of detail that is fully recognized as a complete and uniform. You will see some of the same type of detail across the street at the Public Safety Building of the police officer and the firefighter. Those are also models from our police and fire department. Those employees are still with us, as far as I can recall. But I think that one of the things that we were trying to do is complete the Tribute Garden, which was planned many years ago. We're very close to having the last of our statuary. And with anybody who has a desire to have recognition of their family members, or friends, or just people that you want to contribute to, members of the military, or former members who cannot afford the bricks, we will also take those through the Legacy Foundation to ensure that anybody who is wanting a brick, wants to have their family member recognized, we want to make sure everybody has that opportunity at the Tribute Garden. So, thank you for your work on this, from Ball Corporation and from the other groups that are contributing, and I would wholeheartedly support this moving forward. And I will be glad to help you write your check to the foundation to get another two or three of these done. So, before you, counsel, you have Item 10E. This is a button vote, if you would, please. And we have a 6-0 vote. Ladies and gentlemen, that concludes the business of the City Council for tonight. We have one more meeting this year. We hope to see you all back here next Monday, and after that, we hope you'll enjoy your holiday. And to everyone who came tonight, thank you for your time and your effort. We are adjourned.